Nation may know.
Yes.
We'll keep working on that, making that more robust.
And this also includes the secular states. Ethics.
Uh, let's see.
Two, every two year test. And the acknowledgement, right?
Yes, that's required under two sixty eight A. But we did add it.
Do we?
That's. Yeah. Other angle if I am. Or we skipped a. I thought it was buying you only.
I thought so.
But I think.
So. You can wait for a second.
Yes.
On their age should be maybe it's elsewhere implied that. That the members should. familiarize themselves with the laws that set out in the preamble.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Well, these are.
Yeah.
Some more. No, I mean, I agree. These are all things that we have to do to get started. I mean, that's part of the orientation and I know that we take a test and conflict issues. Yes, I, I don't, I don't think it's still a bad thing in the preamble that we live the law that, but we expect members to. Read them. I, I know that sounds like silly, but yeah, I agree.
If you're expecting, not what you assume.
Okay.
That feels similar.
Put that in a thing. Thank you.
Familiar as.
Familiar as here.
Thank you. Yeah.
If you like self enforcement. Yeah.
Okay.
To provide themselves with and adhere to. Maybe.
I think we might.
No, but I will say we're expecting the meetings. Yes.
Yes. All right, want to move on? Section two, preparation for meetings.
Did we finish? Oh, wait.
Oh, I think.
Do we? Three. Did we do the preamble?
I thought, okay, I was jumping to one.
And instead just say, um, I. Have added in the one point three to the draft because Maya had put out some guidance to communities about, you know, it's personal policy, so applying to elected officials and just having good clarity around that in case you have to.
That's it.
Investigate something. Where we have very clear standards related to if it was a town employee.
Right.
Um, that was not an elected official, how would you handle harassing? Um, not understand, but I can.
Work with them. Yeah, we're, I mean, yeah. But these, these never know. Yeah. We'll take a look at the.
Well, I mean, it's.
Yeah, you're great. Yeah. Uh, but I like one, two, one point one and one point two.
All right, let's move on to preparation for meeting.
On two point two. Um, what about, uh, this talks about. Members posting and so on and messaging with another member outside of a public meeting, including on social media. What is? What about, um, Facebook posts? So one person may post something on Facebook that can be seen by all the others, even if they don't respond to it. Does that, that caution? We have feelings about that. What's not kosher is deliberation. So anything that can look like. I guess I'm wondering like if, if one member posts an opinion issue, for example, which I mean, they shouldn't be doing anyway, especially if it's a matter in front of us, right? But if they do, then everyone else knows.
Yeah.
What they feel about it and then maybe that.
I believe that's, and the government one that was cited as a violation of open meeting law on social media say, I'm like. Like, so I can, um. Yeah, broadcast, how you're going to vote.
And I think it's the same as if you were to reply on the call on an email, even if there's not a back and forth.
Right.
If you say how you feel, you're deliberating as you're stating your position to them.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. You think refraining from is not enough, is strong enough? Well, it just that it's, it says with one other, with more than one other member. I just think that in social media posts. It's slightly different, so we might want to clarify that. Because we do have. Members on this board, but on one of the forests that do post on Facebook and do broadcast their opinion and I just. I just want to know what our.
You could have a forum.
I know this is just for the.
Give that example that you just gave at the end, for example.
Okay.
I, it's not more than one, it's one or more.
Thank you. All right. I was.
It's probably should be one or more, right? So then you're. And so maybe we could even put in there like.
The other members.
That would, that might broadcast a member's opinion on an issue before the court. Obviously, the residents, the things about other matters, but. All right, let's, Miles, why don't you hold off on that one? Let's think about, um. This may be two different things. One is deliberating with, with, you, you can legally talk to one other member about something that you're fixing, so. You know, boards that are three members go to five, so they can at least talk to someone on occasion, right? So you could prohibit it, but you don't have to.
No, I'm not that.
So, so that's, so this is about more than one member. Um, but then the second piece maybe is the social media, the social media ones. So why don't we pull those two apart? Because broadcasting anything, even if you don't know if the board member is going to see it. Okay, I get it.
Yeah, and that probably go with then social media conduct outside of meetings.
Yeah.
As long as you got a fine home for it. No, because it's not a conduct in the meeting.
Okay.
Um. And then preparation, I think it's also the issue of. You don't want to, the tree is a quorum. So then last meal deliberation for that on our screen. So is it just one other or? One other, or is it two or more?
Well, it's just refraining from one or more than one other member. Yeah, so more. That's one.
Right. Thank you.
So just when it comes to the section, RB, thinking of maybe is the potential ended adding in some clarification about not deliberating in this section? And we would tackle the social media on another contact outside of meetings page.
Yeah, yeah. You just take some notes on that. We can, we're with it. That might be the best way to do this is to do it on comments and. And no, actually, maybe we should do in those two point three, we're talking about member who will refrain from taking the public stance a lot pending the jet items. I mean, that, that would. Yeah, for public stance. Or publicly announced stance, right? Probably worth that. Is the, is entering meetings open minded to? No, I didn't.
I don't like.
Okay, so two point four is fine with me.
And then remote participation still is permitted.
Still allowed.
Five.
We'll have to.
Where's that?
Can you make a comment at two point four? Miles, about what we had to think about what happens? After, if, if remote participation changes.
Okay, I'm.
If state law.
If state.
Right, because the select board only adopted remote participation without state law, the other state, the old state law entered. September twenty one.
And that's when it started, oh, along.
It's April. It's April.
It's, okay. Okay.
And they don't want, they don't want. Say, oh, my God. April second, they'll, they'll do something. And after dining and, and they're all on the same stuff.
Great.
Okay.
You want to conduct meetings.
Okay, so three point two, I mean, I, I like three point one and three point two, but three point three, we just wanted to do stuff.
Yeah.
Um. So it would be my preference. As I mentioned, the UK that. Conflicts of interest, yeah. Get a written opinion. From town councilman, but I agree that you don't want to feel a written. Communicate with every question. So. I would say anytime that a board member is going to have an entanglement with any of the other boards and have like, I mean. Permit or. Something in front of another board. Um, that would probably. Make sense? Yeah, and there's probably one you could put, so having a financial interest in. Yeah. A contract the town has, like, for instance, the golf course, you know, there's been. People have asked whether they can be social members because the town has a financial, that's a financial interest in a conflict that town has, so. But we're, we're.
Sorry.
That is waiting for a vendor.
I'm trying to, um. Situations where you would need a written opinion, situations where you could rely on a moral opinion.
Yes.
Uh, well, the ethics decision used to give oral opinions on, on to municipal employees. But town council wouldn't give an oral opinion to them.
I mean, if it's like an issue of we choose, we choose all, if the issue's coming up.
I mean, it's gonna be really hard to draw that line on. Supposed.
We, we, we could drag, grind you off the topic with an opinion of the refusal.
Right.
Right, I also. Think that my understanding about why the state ethics has a line you can ball with an attorney for the day to just talk to somebody is to be as. Cultivating of people making those calls to begin with, so that you're not committing on the front end. The same, I'm definitely going to get a written opinion on this, like, we can just call. You can get a handle on whatever the situation into yourself, so I'd be really hesitant if we sign anybody's like comfort to know that they had that. Option available to them.
So what if, what if instead of, you know, our first. Go to, when you have a question like that, but ask and press. What if we made a call to the hotline and the hotline says either, you know, you're totally fine or. No, you're not fine and you can, you can go. Just got the decision. I mean, is that a way to? Redirect some of the easier requests? Like my neighbor's coming in front of the support with the project. You know, we know each other socially, but there, but I'm not, you know, I'm not involved in the group that's coming forward. I guess my, you know, it's at six o'clock, it's quarter to six, you're not going to get an answer. Right, so why don't we, um.
There's also an issue disclosing. That's another level of, you know, choosing to disclose and just, I know this person.
Well, that's a section twenty three disclosure, where you're not ready for participating, but you need to disclose. Well, you need to also state, I, I believe I can render an objective bias.
I still think that three point three though, because it's perceived, they're determined or perceived. I mean, in a town. By the need of, are we, are we ever not, no? So I mean, the, the ethics, it's kind of, you know. The ethics law says. You have a conflict of emphasis, pretty clear if you have a financial interest in somebody. Right, and so. Your neighbor. Is applying for, you know, a block party, you have no financial interest because you know your neighbor. I mean, I think that's pretty clear, so. Um, I don't know, I, there's a, it is tricky to figure out this threshold, but maybe this is something we just bring Chris in and ask him.
Yeah, I, I think we need to make that threshold clearer.
As I do think there should be. Like, like, I think what it said is like. In some cases, written, in some cases, I'll never mention it.
Right? I didn't. Did you, what about putting in some ability for the rest of the board? Like, if it feels icky, then you can. Require them to get a written, you know what I mean? Like, you make your own judgment. I don't need a written opinion, it's my neighbor or whatever, but. And I don't think anybody's going to have an issue with that, but if it's something that's in here and you're like, I don't need a written opinion. Do you want to put in some mechanism where the rest of the board can require you to get it?
Well, okay, well, I don't think about, yeah. Not sure that I want to do that.
Well, it wouldn't be a mechanism, would it just be language saying, oh, other board members can raise a question?
But they don't have to do, I mean. They have to know, they'd have to do, the, the member would have to disclose.
Right.
And. Or the two, the conversation, I mean, it's a little complicated. I don't think it's that. I guess I'd really like to have it.
Really hard to. I suppose you could take the most serious and obvious thing.
I think there are some things that we can say for sure to me. If you're going in front of a board.
It doesn't feel, obviously. Just based in the beginning. You would need a.
Well. I, yeah, I, I mean, I think. Wouldn't hurt to have it.
But maybe something to the effect, like you said, added board members can send a number together and. Or a majority of the board or something.
What's the timeline? If you're at a meeting and a member disclosed that they have some interest in. Or you, you. But totally, right, you see on the agenda for another board that somebody's appearing. You could ask the chair, raise it at another meeting. Right, I mean, I. All right, so maybe we'll get to the right. Yes, we were, this is pretty true.
All right, Mr. Chair, before we move on, do you mind if I ask the guests, um, just to say your name and your address, so we have it on the record, saying, when we're doing the minutes, we can go back.
Right.
My name's Bruce Eisenhut. I'm meeting member and one oh six Mark Tree Road, in.
Thank you.
Maggie Abruzzi, thirty Bridle Trail, also.
Thank you.
I know.
Unless you speak.
Yes, here.
Your own, you know, one ninety eight barrels. I can give. Right, thank you. For humans too, my. Okay. Three point four.
Um, I'm not where the word personal criticism came from. But it, um. As a term of art, I'm not sure that catches, town meeting member, I mean, I'm sorry, town moderator.
Right.
At the beginning, uh, does this thing about not referring to personal, um. What is it? Personality.
Personal character.
Personal care, but anyway, that language I know had been vetted. So you might want to go back and pick up that language.
Okay.
Yeah, you get, you get sort of where we're going, but you think that language isn't clear.
Yeah, you don't want to make it too broad, because you have First Amendment issues there. You do have right to criticize of, or the cost.
You know, these all say will refrain, you know, and, and we've agreed to do, right? So I, I, I don't think we have First Amendment. We've had board members way back yell at each other in personal ways, so if you don't want to come. Well, yeah, I wonder, is there a difference between something you. Are thought they're really agreeing to do, versus. Like a legal document, but.
I, I'm sorry, I mean, I just didn't want to appear too charming.
Yeah, yeah.
And the town moderator has that.
Right.
Yep.
Personal, yeah, personal facts.
Okay, remember will be ruled on order.
Yeah. Yes. Our, I, so we've, we've not worked on that language for criticism. Three point five, thank you.
And can we just add like which they are officially participating? Yeah.
Right.
Because. Board meeting, you, it means like work.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, like if I text Kevin while we were watching and, yeah. Like different meeting, one that we're not considering. Yes, I would say during a select board meeting, maybe a vacated session, you should. Yeah, right. That's really funny, I didn't think of that. Um, okay, so.
Three point six.
It's my only thought is I wonder if this sentence stands on its own, because it is not. Limited to what you learn in executive session session.
It's a good point, but, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, chair or individual board members. If you need a dress code of language. Or, or language. Oh.
Or.
Yeah, I was gonna. Yes. You could.
Play the devil's advocate. If someone tells you to put the board in, in, if they. Public commentary. And just grant on their own. I wouldn't do, if they can say what they want, that's part of it. I'm not entering the dialogue with them.
Oh.
But I don't want them as. I signal like. We don't want open, this, this isn't Facebook in front of Slack board, it is, we do it. I want this to have it moderated, but it is public comment, so is there a line?
I think, I think disrespectful, demeaning and inappropriate. I mean, all of those, you know it when you see it, I guess.
Yeah.
You know, we have people come and refuse to stop talking about train warning, not maybe, but you know, um. Not demeaning, maybe inappropriate because the person wouldn't stop.
Right, okay.
But it wasn't direct attacks that. Was to, yeah, staff saying that they are failed, failures.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and that is like, yeah. Excellent, pointing out people, I would moderate that. Okay.
Is this the place to get more specific about what procedure you would follow for a skip a warning and?
Oh, all right, yeah, for, um. Specifically, yeah, public comment, do you have a between, a start between the limit?
I guess the question is whether the, 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 the procedure by which the chair would. Would follow through on this, is that in a code of conduct, which is. Tending to address the conduct of the board members, or is it in the manual for the orientation that says things like how to make a motion, how to hold a public hearing, so. I don't know, that's the question, Bruce, what do you think?
That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, your question.
I think it should be in the, in the, in the orientation, in the like, in the section of how to run a meeting. If somebody's out of line, you know, there's a warning and then, you know, when you ask the police to remove them or, you know. And like, would the member? Just, you know, speak up or would they turn to the chair and say, I'm a chair. I wrote that way so you would ask that question and tell them how you want it. Because.
I think, right.
Miles and I were playing devil's advocate on this, because if the chair won't, I mean, we're, we're talking about to future, right?
Yeah.
Then I wrote it so that individual members would be empowered, but if you think it should be the other way, then. No, no, not necessarily. I mean, I think. Now, everyone's standards are a little different, which makes it a little tough, but, yeah, I think mostly situations are pretty clear when getting them. So.
In my sense, um, we're just looking at this, yes, under the open meeting law, that there has very broad discretion in terms of like controlling the meetings. So I feel like if it's comes to the point of like asking somebody to remove themselves from the room or. It, it, things like that, I feel like the chair is given that authority. So maybe the role for other board members is those times where it's not elevating to like a couple of events. But it's like, can you personally have discomfort and the chair maybe didn't, or?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think a member turned to the chair and say, I'm uncomfortable. It's going, but there are also times when. The chair is uncomfortable. I, 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 I still. Feel like there are times when you do. Okay, this is too much. Like directly to, speaking directly to the situation versus being. So. I think actually, I would say this is probably fine, right, and then, and you're off as usual. Well, they have the other people.
No, I'm okay with this, I think you, you, I'm sort of. In the, what, tension of a moment like this, sometimes I think you're waiting this time, I can call you on that, it's okay. And the cherry's not, you know, a god and knows all things, so someone want to call to the person's attention, that's.
It is, sometimes, yeah, if I run many meetings and touch it on like the fourth thing in your head and.
Yeah.
Heard it.
Right. Okay.
Okay, and so we'll, and we'll put, you know, if a process will go anywhere, it just. Yeah, because we were just looking at. The normal, the clean, clean thoughts and.
All right.
What does previous, previous discussion mean in brief?
Right.
So just as a stranger reading that, same question.
Well. I would think that. You were going to raise. Person about whom you were raising the issue first. Just so, I mean, I. I'm unhappy with the way you've gone about this, I feel uncomfortable with it, I think we need to discuss it, and we're going to discuss it in open meeting, because that's, that's how we do things. And I want to let you know that I'm bringing it up so you're not, you don't feel ambushed. I think it's just heard of me.
So that, we use discussion with the, them are effective or something.
Yeah, I mean, it's. I mean, I, I have to, I have to imagine that if, you know, if you have an issue that gets that. Level where you feel like you need to address it in the open meeting, then you've already probably. Has now. You would hope, but. I think requiring it is really going to be. I, I can envision the situation with somebody raising. I, I can envision the situation with somebody raising. This is it, this is your expectation of each other, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Shall I raise the issue without? Providing. Previous discussion as a courtesy.
Yeah, it hits my ears a lot, it makes, it does.
We can work with it, that's what you're looking for.
Um.
And you may want to make it an individual member, that way. First of all, it should probably should be individual, not plural, because, right, so, a member. To have the option to address the ethical issues.
Um, or.
On another member. Um. After having raised the issue with that member director, something like that.
Or prior, prior to bringing up any issue. With public meeting, does it get? As opposed to? You call the attorney first, or is your? You talk to town council person, you talk to the member. Before you bring this up?
Will the member themselves have to call? The state of.
Well, the, the thing is though, that I think this is one of those situations in which you could have. A perceived violation that is not actual, but. And so maybe. I mean, maybe in some cases it is, but maybe. Where it's not, you still want to bring it up, it just be like, this looks a little, you know. Unusual, and I just want to clear the air about things and make sure that we're all on the same page, like. You know, the meeting because of X, Y, Z events or.
Presumably, if you did that. Then the person would say, oh, I see where your point, I'll, I'll call the ethics commission and then it's not right, you know, or, or.
Yeah.
So like the.
Presumably, you could have this conversation. One on one, and that will be the result.
Yeah.
And then you've never had the conversation in open meeting, but if you had it and it didn't. Resolve, then maybe you have it again publicly.
Do you want to say that? Do you want to say a amount of concerns about perceived? Ethical issues will contact the member? And reserves the right to bring it up in open session, if not, something like that?
Yeah.
I mean, if it was, if I was. If I was a member and you perceived that I had an ethical issue, I would want that from my fellow members, that you would contact me directly. Right?
Right.
So is that what you're saying? I'm saying at the start of that.
Yeah.
So that the expectation is like, your first call is to me to say, I think that you have a problem, I think you have a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. Or, yeah, I'm sorry.
And the second thing is you reserve the right to bring it up in.
Yeah.
Right. So have the option to bring it up, but yeah. Is that? Your eyebrows up or down?
Ultimately, you're, you're giving your colleague the benefit of the doubt by giving them a chance.
You know, putting in.
Where's your. Concern, and then. Move on.
But you're also putting an obligation on the member who's concerned to actively make that call.
Right.
Which is a good.
I think that's appropriate to give them.
Yeah.
Clear up the issue in private. Yes. Um, can I just comment?
Yeah.
Maggie. You also want to be. Um, cognizant of. Someone saying. Uh, I, you know, I, he had a conflict. Okay, well, I've spoken to town council and it's fine, but you still don't feel. Well, that wouldn't satisfy, that wouldn't do it, because it's fine.
Yeah.
And, and, and town council says. Whatever, I mean, a lot of conflict issues are. Um. Complicated, complex, right? So wouldn't that be an occasion where you would say? And maybe here's a place to give the member authority to say. Let's get that in writing. So the town council does a written opinion in that case, because it, your, again, it's your discretion, right? You're the one who feels icky about what's going on. You ask about it, you still feel icky. Well, yeah, I mean, I think, uh, if. If. In a hypothetical situation, I felt icky enough to. Discuss it with a colleague and wasn't able to get to. My concern to resolve, then in a public meeting, I would say, I think we need to. Block this out, like, we need to involve town council and make sure that everything. For sure, I, I don't think, if I already had concerns about colleagues, then I don't think. I mean, I, I would want a little. More than just sending them off to get a letter than maybe they get or they don't get, but either way, I don't know. But yeah, actually, did you know, if town council writes that letter, it's filed with the town clerk. You guys could request, you could make it part of the procedure that a copy is provided to the select board, but it already gets filed with the town clerk. And it gets filed with the state ethics commission, the state ethics commission has thirty days to respond to that letter to say, I agree with you or. Uh, you have the law wrong and it actually isn't how it was. Well, yeah, I mean, I, I think it comes to the same end.
I do think that it's an example of when a letter might be appropriate.
Yeah.
The board in public could say, we want you to get a letter and we won't see it. Right, that's, that's kind of one that's. You have a result.
Well, we could go. Like that. Yeah. If, if it went to the. We all met and was not sad at that.
Yeah.
Not necessary. The latter request for clarification is not necessary, that's what leaves lottery. When Chris he sends that letter.
Yeah.
It's his information. And if the ethics commission gives him. A response, it's still his information until he acts on it. That's what I was explaining to him.
In his work, it has to be filed. By the town clerk, it has to be filed.
We can.
Okay, so we're gonna.
Yeah.
Keep it going, because we're not going to get fucked up, but we're gonna.
We'll have Chris come in, but.
All right, we're gonna, yeah, so we're flying through this. Okay, uh. We'll, I have this. Conduct outside of meetings.
So, um, I know. Jean McKnight and myself were big on this little issue, which started bearing in here a little bit. So sometimes. Municipal employees. Uh, elected appointees, just even volunteers. Our town meeting members and their better town meeting will stand up and they'll talk about an issue.
Right.
And I just feel it's very important. That they say, speaking as an individual, um, town meeting member, not as. You know, a volunteer for ABC.
Right.
Committee. And, and you have part of that effort, but not for town, speaking at town meeting. Right?
Okay.
Four point one.
Yeah.
It, it's not for speaking at town meeting?
I think he's recommending that if members stand up at town meeting.
Yeah.
Not in their capacity as board that they say.
Right.
Know that we ever.
I don't think that, that happens.
Well, I see. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
She always says, she always makes very careful, I'm speaking not as a member.
Select board those sits in the front there. Board acts it up to speak as members.
Um, I, I guess.
I've never seen.
I mean.
Well, you're right, that would happen.
Actually, the one I'm saying, we have.
Wait, wait.
Well, that's big for themselves, yeah.
They at large.
But they're not.
Yeah, they're not elected in that, that's. Is Jean McKnight elected to town meeting?
Okay, so you're right, this is just, um, one of the two, two, staff board members, so it's not. Here, but maybe somewhere.
But the, the related question, and I'm only raising it because it has come up in the past, I don't know what it feels, is that? The board has had. Uh, different views as to whether. Individuals should. Vote, and I think most people have come down and then. You can vote the way you want to vote.
Yeah.
But that, you know, they'll, they'll vote with the board.
Oh, right.
That's how we.
Yes. Okay.
But we did, did we put into this, they don't speak to it?
Um.
It says if you're representing the board, you speak on behalf of the board's decisions. Right, and if you're representing yourself and you specifically didn't say that, then you can say, well, the board decided this, personally, I thought. But. Yeah, I thought that was pretty clear.
Okay.
All right, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
Four point three, that's. If there's a charge to attend. You have to pay the charge.
Right.
Okay.
Again, we should be looking at how much that is, so maybe you could keep track of that.
So this, and so the issue of like the fifty dollar limit. Yes, over fifty, can we, this is, it's something else.
Well, no, this would be the same fee we heard too. Free ticket to summon a fifty dollar or more, where the ticket is fifty dollars more.
Okay.
Well, it says, you should.
Or you can fill out that form.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, on occasion, if you're having a best and you're, and they've been asked to be the emcee.
Right.
You know, them saying you don't have to pay can be legitimate. If you're participating and running, yeah, but if you're just attending, it's a different story.
Okay. Um. Actually, can we articulate that? That's very helpful.
Um, let me ask. I mean, I think some of the, sometimes the reason why they wave the fee.
Right.
They're here.
And that's what they are.
Yeah.
That's a five.
Okay.
Mostly we can't, I mean.
Right.
I go to the chamber to get an award and I still pay.
Four point four.
This is getting at that, you know, when people send us an email.
Yeah.
It's this, well, we're going to answer.
I really like that. I hate thinking that.
And Miles will create an SOP on this, so that's clear, like, who's been told.
Thank you much.
All right, Miles?
Okay.
Maybe I.
All right. Um, five, automaking versus administration of policy. I was, I thought this was succinct. Was. Wonderful.
You know.
Uh, Eastern has a whole page on.
Concerns around the town government, I mean, don't call me if you want to know if the field's open, feel free, you know what I mean, like, that's, you know. Many communities are stricter, but you're gonna want to do like more than I, you know, clothing might seem, so that, the point is, if it's like. Should we name this bridge, you know? I don't know where that came from. For not feeling like that happened, or taking direction from six people, yeah, you know, I think that's. We avoid that.
Okay. Um, six, use of power accounts.
The worry, consulting. Chris, my number on place.
Yeah, you know, again, other community, other communities are stricter, I think we're trying to say that you should and can call, don't call at any time.
Yeah. Seven, public records.
Um, so. This. Seven point one makes me think I need to review. The, the rule on that, I wonder if we can just. Reference the. Likely, or. That the national.
What a government constitution of government record? Yeah, yeah, the document received or sent to operation of government, essentially, but yes.
Well, I didn't. Include that. So. It's a handy to review. Uh, but also. Um.
Yeah, yeah, very lengthy.
Um, my other question, do we need to archive, or it's basically a word, uh, keyword search or? Uh, request?
So I get back to the municipal records intention schedule, I. I would have let that guide you, I would say, you know, we have to get permission, so. Individual members shouldn't be looking and saying, okay, this correspondence is over three years old, we still have to get permission, even though it's in scale, so. I would say. You're both using the M M A email.
And because never.
We maintain it, but we did it by mistake, I still didn't do it, so. If you ever have any reason, like, your nails down and you have to use your own, just copy yourself. Or, you know, so, we'll always have that. Um, we don't have a mechanism for tar, for archiving texts, so. You'll need to save them forever, change your setting to not thirty days, but forever. Or don't ever use it.
Okay. And this applies to, um. Well, in this case, we're trying to go select board, but municipal records includes anybody on any municipal issue or. Can you sort of, in your, what we now have down, other board members or?
You know, you've seen the public records, right? So, they'll ask for, okay, they might ask for. Um, any email between me and the chair of the library trustees and this other person. Um. Text, WhatsApp, anything, and so. Um, it's hard to, yeah, so if you, if. And then they want all the select board too, I'm just a terrible example, but if, and so if you have emailed the chair of the library trustees because you were working on appointments, then that email will come up. So even though there's nothing to do, yeah. Uh, we did a training, let's see for the training.
Yeah, that one, yeah.
We'll get that out again.
Um. Often, but could we put in language that like? Code of conduct, like, set phone text, we never believe nothing we did. I mean, that's.
That should be enough, right?
But it is basically how we manage ourselves. I mean, it must be some, just be aware they have to. Like that. Second. Okay. Names only knowledge.
So like, do we have to have all the members acknowledge this?
Yeah, you know, like when we hire a new employee, we.
Yeah.
Acknowledge that you've received all the policy.
Because you certainly might get. Number who didn't agree or. Agree with, but.
Yeah.
That just like a signature, walk along.
Yeah.
I don't, let's say, I don't know that you can require or expect it.
Right.
Right, because I know that eight point one, eight point two is not something you have to do it, so.
No. I don't know. You just have. But what if it's not, someone didn't want to buy it?
Yeah.
Good to know that about you.
If you business dissection.
All right.
All right.
Cool. Yeah.
Miles, do we have anybody on, um, watching?
No, yeah. Yes.
Great.
So, um, should we have another meeting and invite Chris?
Yeah.
And then maybe get drafted to the board for public discussion? What do we want to target? What do we want to target for public discussion? March? I think you were very interested in having this done, very well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Next, we will be. Next, we will do.
Fifteen? Questioning before.
Over.
Oops, is that bad? Very good.
Yeah.
Action. Okay. Before.
So I bring with Chris.
Last thing.
And then I would like to bring up something, maybe you wrote this later, just we'll bring that up, and I think a lot of issues in here for like. All right. You will adjourn.
Yeah. It's a privilege of you and me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hope we adjourned.
I second it. All right, all those in favor?
I. Thank you.
Names.
All right.